All right, I think our one-minute grace period is up. All right, so call to order the Planning Commission meeting Thursday, August 15th. Everyone is here except Commissioner Bodnar. Are there any public comments for items not on the agenda?
Public will be silent.
Great. For the whole meeting?
I'm not making any...
No promises.
All right, so we'll move to the consent calendar and the Planning Commission minutes of July 18th and August 1st.
I have a correction.
Maybe we'll... Do you want to take them both at the same time, or July 18th, first?
My correction is July 18th. On the last page, when it said Commissioners Reports and Comments, and I said I asked what the policy was regarding Commissioner absences, not vacancy as on the days, but whether if you're going to not make a meeting, you should tell staff or the chair so we can make sure we have a quorum.
And did you want to take them one at a time, or should I?
Or we just stick with 18?
Stick with 18, okay. That was my comment as well, so.
So with that correction, I move that we accept the minutes of Thursday, July 18th.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
I'm standing.
Okay.
So then my comments on the meeting, our last meeting, which was August 1st, will be on page four of five at the top. It talks about rear elevators, and those are all, there's two references to elevator elevators. Those are elevations, yeah. So with that, I'll move that we accept the minutes of August 1st.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
I went upstanding this time. Okay, so we'll move to the public hearing, 4898 El Camino Real. Staff report.
Good evening, Chair Smek. My name is Sean Gairos, Associate Planner in the Planning Division. The item before you again is a development at 4898 El Camino Real that includes a design review, a use permit, and a subdivision application for a five-story multifamily building with 21 condominium units or an alternative design with 28 condominium units. The proposal for 28, 21 units provides four affordable units, two very low, and two moderate density, moderate income level, with a 35% density bonus. The proposed 28-unit alternative provides for two moderate and four very low in exchange for an 87% density bonus. Both of them have development incentives to allow for increased height and reduce front yard setbacks and a waiver for height of the elevator tower. On August 1st, the Commission held a public hearing to review the proposed 21-unit development. The Commission continued the application to address specific concerns, which are outlined in the agenda report and are also in the minutes, the draft minutes before you. On the site plan, there were no changes to the building footprint or to the hardscape. There were modifications to the landscaping, which reflected later in the presentation, and that are reflected in the landscape plans. The elevations, let me see, here we go. The elevations on the screen provide the proposed design for tonight's meeting compared with the previous design presented to the Commission on August 1st. The upper level is the proposed 28, 20, well, it's the proposed design, whether 21 or 28. And the lower level is the previous design on August 1st. In response to the direction from the Commission, I wanted to highlight some of the responses from the applicant. One was the super frame banding thickness was reduced and Trespa horizontal siding was added to reduce the overall bulk of the structure. The elevator tower eliminated the stucco transition along the third and fourth floors. And the stucco material was replaced with a Trespa horizontal siding, which created a more integrated design. The overall width of the balconies were reduced to diminish overall bulk and mass, and the equitone railing material was replaced with a thickened metal, equally spaced to create a more residential design. The Trespa horizontal siding was added to create a more uniform transition to the stucco and the required siding. And then the stair tower per direction from the Commission was reduced to 68 feet. The architect will be available to provide and to grow into greater detail regarding their response to your direction. In response to the Commission's direction, the architectural section details are provided for the windows and to reflect their transition with adjacent materials. Additional architectural section details are provided for the structure. The following is the revised front elevation along El Camino Real with a partial view of the left elevation. The revised front elevation and then the right elevation along Jordan Avenue. The revised, do I have that? Sorry, one more click. The simulation is from the rear of the site, and the zoom photo simulation again shows the building design at the Landscape Entry Plaza with the two-story entry element. In response to Commission's direction, sheet AD1 provides a detail of the garage entry gate. That is at the upper right of the screen. For private open space, an average of 50 square feet is required. As a result of the modifications to the balconies, the overall private space did decrease, but it still does provide 148 square feet average for the units, which does meet the requirement. Common open space has not changed. It's still 6,045 square feet, which meets the requirement for 1,600 square feet for the site. In response to Commission's direction regarding landscaping, sheet L2 was updated by increasing the number of Brisbane box trees from two to three trees along Jordan Avenue. The addition of two Japanese maple trees and the maintaining of the two proposed Western redbud trees, which were partially relocated to be more along the frontage. And this was, was done, of course, to address and to respond to increasing the overall landscaping streetscape. No trees were proposed along the rear 20 feet of the property due to an existing access easement, requiring that the area be open and accessible without any path obstructions. The above slide is the rooftop deck. No changes were, were made to this deck. For the alternative design with 28 units, with four affordable units at the very low income and two at the moderate income, the project is providing 27% of the density at very low and a total of 40% affordable. Since providing more than 11% of low income qualifies for 35%, the project is significantly exceeding the maximum specified by state law or the city's Affordable Housing Ordinance. Both by state law and city ordinance, the allowing of a granting, the granting of a density bonus over 35% is appropriate if additional affordable units are provided. In this case, the applicant is seeking 87% while providing a 40% of its base density as affordable. For the alternative design, the incentives and waivers are unchanged from the 21-unit design. And the findings and incentives required, the findings required for the incentives and waivers are provided in the agenda report. This slide provides the alternative design along the top with the original design below. This is a reflection of the floor plan and how they're potentially changing. The first floor reflects one three-bedroom and one four-bedroom is being converted to three two-bedrooms, which includes two market rate units and one very low-income unit. The second floor reflects a two-bedroom, a two, three-bedroom units being converted to one one-bedroom very low, one one-bedroom moderate, and one two-bedroom market rate. The third floor is a, is, reflects two three-bedroom units being converted into one very low-income and two moderate, two moderate two-bedroom units and one two-bedroom market rate unit. Next, along the fourth floor, two-bedroom, two four-bedroom units were being converted to one bedroom unit that's market rate, two bedroom units that are very low, and two bedroom market rate units. And finally, on the fifth floor, two four-bedroom units were converted to one market rate unit and two bedroom units that are also market rate. The applicant will, of course, go into more detail on their proposed 28-unit alternative design. This concludes staff's presentation. Is there any questions? The architect and the applicant are available to respond to any questions. Thank you.
Quick question, Sean. I remember that the parking was extremely generous for the 21-unit proposal. I presume that the parking still is compliant for the 28-unit proposal. Could you speak a little bit about that?
Yeah, so one of the items that I forgot to mention, of course, was a updated resolution that was provided to you. It's been tabbed to reflect the location of the change. The, the applicant would need to pursue a, a minimum parking standard exception under the Affordable Housing Ordinance, which does provide for one parking space for each one-bedroom unit and two spaces for every two-to-three-bedroom unit, which would require 52 parking spaces. The applicant is providing 55, so it would meet the requirement. If we follow the standard for the city, the applicant would require 63 spaces if we follow the city standards for our parking ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a couple. Are there any differences between the packet that's dated, received August 15th and the one that was in our package from August 8th?
The, the sole difference, of course, the cover sheet and then the addition of the photo simulated drawings, which are, I think, provided A sheet, A1E through A1J, I believe. Those are, are the new additions to it. Let me confirm, I believe. Yes, those were the sole modifications to it.
Okay.
Part of the reason for that, of course, was the applicant, because of the short timeline, was working on these, and so they were barely able to provide them.
Yeah, no, it's fine. I just am trying to, I reviewed the one in the packet. I just wanted to make sure I understood if there's any major changes from what was submitted. And then, question for staff. I think it's Attachment A of what we received in the packet. Page seven. I guess questioning whether it's a front yard setback or a rear yard setback incentive. Because if you look at B, says a front yard setback of 20 feet where the code requires a front yard setback of 25 feet. And then the next sentence says the height incentive is considered an on-menu incentive, and the rear yard setback incentive is considered one on-menu incentive.
It's a front yard setback incentive?
It is front yard.
Front yard, yes, correct.
Okay. And then, page 11. Looks like they're looking for 17 and a half feet for the elevator tower.
Yes, correct.
I think one of the things we discussed at the last meeting was just what the other buildings along El Camino were getting for elevator towers. I don't know if you have that information or not.
I did previously. Let me, look, I could try to respond. I believe I wrote that information down.
Okay, perfect. So maybe we'll let the applicant do their presentation unless anyone else has any questions. Great. So you guys will have 10 minutes if you need them.
I can't ask for 15 again. Can I have 15 minutes, please?
Sure.
I will try to go fast so that we're not keeping you here. Sean, can we pull up the points? I did want to thank staff for their hard work and the quick turnaround on this, and thank you guys for getting us onto this hearing. We're actually very excited about the changes that were made to the project based on your feedback. Hopefully, you guys will be as excited as we are. And I need to click her. I might have to ask you to do it. Sorry. Thank you. So I'll try to go through this very quickly. Just a synopsis of the changes that we kind of heard and addressed in no particular order are, were the type of stone, the quote-unquote "superstructure", the horizontal feel of the balcony railings and the railing detail itself. A request for more of the siding element, some additional landscaping, and addressing the tower element on the corner. I do want to touch on the open space very quickly first. Again, part of the overall redesign, which answered many of the questions on that list, was to remove the shallow portions of the balconies almost in their entirety. And so that did drive the, the private open space down quite a bit. And you can see in those areas now that almost all of that private open space exceeds five feet in depth. We still have 3,03100 square feet more than what's required for the building in that private open space. And again, the public open space far exceeds what's required as well. So I just wanted to touch on that. I really just put this together so that we could see, again, the workshop, Planning Commission meeting from two weeks ago, and then the new design. One of the focal points was redesigning the corner stair elevator tower. Kind of bringing that wood material up, bringing some stucco up to the upper portion, and breaking those masses apart from one another so that it felt a little more logical to have the elevator and the stair at different heights, which is one of the main challenges we had when we were looking at that. Again, we revised the size and the nature of that superstructure. Maybe it's not super anymore, the, the microstructure now around the, around the balconies by basically reducing it at the bottom floor and reducing it significantly at the top balcony. And actually, we moved that up to serve as that awning feature, which was replaced and sort of lightened up that whole entire element. We also lightened the color of it to further lighten that up. And you can see the difference in the color on the material board here. The gray big piece is the previous color of that, and the lighter small piece here is the current color. It's the same material with the same texture, but just lightened up quite a bit. And then introduced that wood, I should say siding, elements in there. So created some, some massing within those, those accent features to bring that siding element in and reduce those balconies so that we didn't have quite the horizontal feel that we had there before. Also inset the windows in a sort of a stucco panel to sort of balance the horizontal and vertical elements a little bit. And so really, conceptually, we have this layering effect of the equitone material that sits proud, stepping back to the wood and then further stepping back to the stucco. And so you'll see that kind of throughout the building on all four sides. And that, that's sort of the, the theory there. And then we also inset the windows in, in reveals on the, the equitone massing that you can see sort of in the distance there. We'll get around to that side. Revised those balcony railings. Really, we kept, we didn't want to throw out the whole design. So we really kept sort of the accent feature, and we kept the railings similar to what they were, but we kind of revised the spacing of those a little bit to give you more, a little lighter feel. I was a little conflicted because at the first workshop, we had glass railings, and we were told to make them something you can't see through. And then we made them something you can't see through, and they were too heavy, too, too nonsee-through, I guess. So we, we found a spot in the middle that I think we, we kind of really embraced. And so we were treating that as a similar railing material style. We're going to color it in a sort of a rusted metal color. We're not going to let it be rusted metal because it will drip all over the side of the building, and we're a little cognizant of that. But, but that's what we're going to treat it in. And then we updated the stone veneer, and you can see here again, I'll just wait for a second. The old smoother stone veneer, and then we've, we've updated it to be a little bit more textured, a little bit more modeled in color, so you'll get some color variation. What we're going to do with that stone is it comes in three-inch, five-inch, and eight-inch tall pieces. We're going to use three-inch pieces and eight-inch pieces. We're also only going to use 22-inch lengths. And so you're going to get sort of a, a mix of groups of banding just to get a little bit more texture and sort of play on that stone element along the bottom. So I'll quickly go through the rest of these. Again, similar treatment to the side. You can see a little bit more of that tower. It's still set much way back from that corner. But we've sort of broken it into two sort of more logical pieces. One that houses the elevator, the other that houses the stair. We've lowered the tower for the stair that's in the, in the slot there in the middle. And again, that's a very deep slot. And we've treated these accent elements in the, in the same way where we've created these masses of the siding material with the windows in the bedrooms in lieu of having those balconies run all the way across there. And it does really kind of break up and layer that massing quite a bit more than it was layered before. And you certainly can feel it a little bit better along there. Similarly, on the rear, so we were able to kind of incorporate two of these wood elements. We had originally thought about bringing that wood just down that centerpiece between the two darker gray, as you see on the first PC hearing drawing. But we opted to kind of create this similar effect all the way around the building. And it really does bring in sort of a play of materials and depths and colors. And then the, the side-facing 4906, and I just want to quickly kind of get to, it's a little bit easier to see all this here. So this is the old view from the corner with the new view from the corner. And again, you can see now we've got the tower element with the wood instead of that heavier equitone material. And then it wraps around, and it's flanked by two also wood elements with the lighter balconies. And you can see the deep offset and the break in the building down Jordan with the lighter gray material going back into that break and then the, and then the two wood massing elements. Again, the, the view and the change, so that we can see the significance of the change along El Camino side and creating those balcony elements and creating that play of the different materials and the recesses of the windows along there. This was the unfortunate perspective that made it look like that band was really long across there when it really isn't. So we added another one. But I did want to show you the exact ones we had before as well. And so again, you can see it does still feel like that band kind of goes from one end to the other, but really that's several different wall planes there. And so we did adjust this view so that you could really see the break and the slot between that gray edge and that white goes way back in there and has the wood tower. And this is really where you get to see the biggest piece of the stone. We really like the way the balconies address that corner now. So we've got the wood flanking that corner balcony, the recess of the stucco, and then those balconies addressing that corner. And this was the entry. Didn't change a lot except, from this view, except for what you see above. And then we did, as we went to change that metal on the railings, we incorporated that into all of the roof edge, all of the metal roof edges that occur at both this entry level and the upper level, where we removed most of those, but we did keep one at the stucco area there. The roof deck is unchanged from what it was before. And again, the landscape, there were several trees added. It was noted that that grass that was mentioned was, was actually not, was in the legend, but was not shown on the plan anywhere previously. So it's been removed from the legend. And then they added some trees and, and kind of bulked up the landscaping, especially along the Jordan side. I'll, I'll walk you through this real quick. Sean, Sean mentioned it and walked through it a little bit. I think it was a little confusing. We didn't actually design and draw all the units underneath there. So basically, what you're seeing is the red lines superimposed over what existed underneath there before. Those red lines being the footprints of the new units, which we would, you know, pending what kind of recommendation to City Council we get, we would flush those out before that meeting if we were going to move forward either with both proposals or with just, you know, one or the other. But so basically, the first floor, as noted, there was a four-bedroom unit and a larger two-bedroom unit there. We basically split that into three two-bedroom units. One of them is a two-bedroom, one bath, and two of them are two-bedroom, two baths. Second floor, similarly, there was three units there. We split those three into four, adding a one-bedroom and the smaller two-bedroom and keeping a three. So we've got basically two two-bedrooms, a one-bedroom, and a three-bedroom along that side. And we basically took that module and took it all the way up. So it's the same replacement on the third floor. On the fourth floor on that side, we had two very large four-bedroom units. And so those were broken down into four, obviously, much smaller units. The square footage, and as we worked on the redesign, it, it's basically going to be exactly the same. Whether it's a 21-unit building or a 28-unit building, the massing and the square footage and basically size of balconies, all of that stuff is going to be basically identical. It would qualify for a third incentive. We're not asking for a third incentive. We're basically saying it's at the city's leisure as to whether they want us to do a 21-unit building here with some larger units, which I've heard some people say, hey, that's a great idea, but also others think, you know, more smaller is better. Or a 28-unit building with smaller units, 28-unit building, you're getting six BMRs is what we're proposing. Three are required from the baseline on this project. We had four in the 21-unit building. So basically, you're going from four to six. And we're really not asking for anything from a form or massing or anything standpoint. We're just providing the option to the city of which way they would prefer to see us pursue this building. And with that, we're here to answer any questions and go through any comments you might have. I do want to make sure I covered everything. I think so.
Any questions?
I know you mentioned the 28-unit option. The plans haven't been fleshed out yet. Is that going to affect the elevation, or will it, is the goal to kind of have it be the left elevation be roughly the same?
It will affect the, it will not affect the front or the rear or the street side. It will affect the left elevation. We would be forcing it in there if we tried to let it not affect the left elevation. I'll get around to that side here. But I mean, actually, what it's going to do is it's actually going to reduce the massing of some of those elements.
That's what I was thinking.
Create a little bit more even articulation. So the lar, the two larger masses that you see at either end at the top would kind of go away.
Yeah.
Those would be following the lower floor more evenly. It would still meet all the setback requirements and, and all of the open space requirements and provide the decks and all that stuff. So it would actually be, you know, in my opinion, a cleaner, more cohesive elevation there.
Yeah.
It is the side that nobody's really going to see. But yes, we, we would intend to rework that elevation to make it work, and we would do that. Again, if we moved forward with that as a recommendation or as an option, we would rework that before City Council saw the, the elevation and the plans would, would be done together.
Okay.
Questions? I've got a couple. On the, the railing, is, did you explore, are there alternatives to the way that they're currently mounted?
There are. You know, we opted, yeah, we opted on this, this version, this style to actually face-mount. We could certainly, the first floor is deck-mounted, actually, because it sits on that accent. And, and we kind of opted for that face-mounted sort of look and feel for the style of the railing. It certainly could be deck-mounted. It wouldn't significantly change the detail of the deck, although it creates more waterproofing issues than I like to create if I can avoid it.
Okay, and on, let's see, I'm trying to figure out the best. Maybe A1E? Or, sorry, A1I?
Uh-huh, the entry?
Yeah. Are, is that, are those proposed to be lights on the stairs?
Yes. They're just little downlights. I mean, they don't shine out. They shine directly down on the stair in front.
Okay. All right, those are, those are my questions. Thank you. So with that, move to public comment?
I could, if I could, just answer two questions for you. So the parking would be the, the standard density bonus parking, extending incentive. We would still be overparked by three spaces. And I can tell you that the other elevator towers on El Camino are 17 and a half feet as the waiver. It's kind of the standard and something we worked hard to get down to as low as we could.
And staff has some information for you as well.
Based on the information I had from the last meeting, 4846, 4856 El Camino Real...
Based on the information I had from the last meeting, 4846, 4856 El Camino Real pursued a 7.9-foot waiver for the elevator tower. And that was what was approved. And then 4880 El Camino Real had a four-foot waiver for the elevator tower.
Four feet, 17 and 1/2 feet above the 12?
Above the 12-foot requirement.
Didn't they come back to the 12 further?
That was based on the resolution that I found previously, but I could always double-check also, if you'd like.
Okay. So just as a point of clarification, they then came back subsequently and had to ask to get it to the 17 and 1/2.
I do recall.
Because they couldn't.
Thanks. So, public comment, if anyone has, would like to speak, please bring up a speaker card. I've got one so far.
Pardon? I said evening, Dion.
Sue?
Hi, Sue Russell for the League Women Voters. I'd just like to say that with the same FAR, the same massing, the same square footage, from the League's perspective, we would much prefer to see smaller units. They may not be truly affordable, but they're more affordable by design. And I think getting the extra BMRs is a big bonus because they're not asking, as far as I can see, for any additional incentive or waivers. So why not?
Thank you. That will close public comment. Move to discussion.
I was looking at that end.
I can go. All right. So the first thing I had down was the 21 versus the 28. My preference would be for the 28 option. I think whenever there's an opportunity to add seven more units, two of which would be affordable, and as was just mentioned, five would likely be affordable by design. And you don't have to increase the height or the massing. I think it's a win-win. I think in terms of the design, I think the project is much more successful with the updates you've done. It definitely feels more like a residential building than the two previous versions. Changing the material of the tower and then designing the tower in a way where the additional height, that five feet, is kind of incorporated into the form instead of a hat on top of an element, I think was really nice. It's a really nice Personally, I like the tower being all wood. I'm not so sure that putting the wood siding on the units kind of inside those rectangles is as successful. I think that there's certain views with the renderings on El Camino and Jordan Avenue that just kind of feel very wood-heavy. So I don't know if maybe all of those rectangles maybe need that wood siding. I would maybe take a look at that. And then finally, I just think that the articulation on the windows would be good in terms of maybe awnings. I think the previous version had some awnings on top of some of the windows. I think looking at that might be good because I think there's certain spans that I think would maybe benefit from some articulation, especially on the kind of higher floors. But overall, I really like the updates that have been done. And yeah, that's about it.
So I concur with my colleague. I think that the 28 unit is a no-brainer. I understand that there might be some concern that what was really lush parking has now become kind of normal parking. But I think that it meets the standard and I believe it's a good trade-off. It's above what would be minimum, below what we'd like, and somewhere in the middle. I think that's a good compromise. I'm delighted that the superbanding disappeared pretty much. I'm sort of disappointed that Commissioner Bodnar isn't here because she was the one who had the most problem with the metal railings. You know, I would suspect that there will be some lack of consensus on city council. You may very well want to show more than one rail, metal railing-type design, so there can be some discussion about that. But I believe that if you go to several meetings, you're going to get whips on, and this is an example of it. First, you want it clear, then you want it solid, then you want it somewhere in between. So that's going to happen. I'm sorry about that. I agree with Merus that I missed the awnings, and I believe that it went a little overboard on the wood siding, not appallingly bad, but you know, I think you could tweak it a little more. And you're still in the midst of it because the elevations will change if you fully develop the 28 unit. And that might be the time to also look at saying, now I, here's one solution where there are wood strips and then the main wood area, and here's one without that, and see what happens with that. But I think this is a very well-developed project, and I would look forward to seeing getting built.
All right, yeah. I mean, you did a lot in a very short period of time. I mean, and it made just a dramatic difference. So congratulations on that. And you're right, it's too bad Commissioner Bodnar isn't here to see this because she definitely motivated that. I'll just make a comment. I think part of the issue with the more solid rails was that it sort of tied in with the superbanding and just sort of added, I'm talking about the previous version. It just all looked kind of banded. And so these, I think, are a nice contrast and beautifully done. I completely agree on the 28 units, you know, to get seven more units total and to lose the four bedrooms, which, you know, you really don't need. I mean, I think we want some three bedrooms. That's good, and you preserve those. But to really make more space and get rid of the four bedrooms makes a lot of sense. And I agree, you know, two more BMRs, that's a 50% increase from where we were. And seven units overall more for the same or lesser, you know, exterior. And the parking's still within what you're entitled with the affordable units. So I completely agree with the 28.
Right. Yeah, no, I completely agree with the majority of what my commissioners have said. I think it's a, it's become, in my mind, in my opinion, a very cohesive project. And I think, you know, I sort of refer everyone to the view on page, let's see, A1H, which I think is, it kind of, for me, illustrates a rather handsome image rendering perspective. I think there is a balance, at least in this view and in this angle, of a really nice balance between the different materials. The balance between the wood siding and also the stucco elements and the sort of structural bands. I think there's a wonderful sort of cohesiveness to it. I think the, where it may get a little bit heavier, I think, is on the El Camino side, when I look at A1F. But that's, I think, as a result of the tower becoming altered into the wood element. So you see a really dominant sort of composition of, mainly of wood. But I think it still works. I think, I think there's a kind of softness to it and a sort of delicate nature to this, to this project, which I think is a difficult thing to achieve for a building of this size. So I think that's a very positive change that's occurred. I think, I'm hoping that the elevation, when the unit distribution is determined, will help to make a better composition on the left elevation, A4D. I think, again, there's a lot happening here, but it, there's enough sort of cohesiveness to hold it together. But I think here's an opportunity to explore maybe lightening the materials a little bit and creating a different look and feel to this elevation. That could work. I think my only comment to the railing and the balconies, I wonder about the safety of that, that design, whether it's, it feels in some ways like a ladder, or you're promoting a little bit of potential sort of missteps in climbing. So that's something to, I think, look out for and be aware of. In terms of the unit distribution, I'm in full support of the 28-unit layout for the various reasons that have already been pointed out. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues. I think that the 28 units is probably better. And I think the building looks very good. Just by, I don't know if this is worth raising here, but I was driving past and there's the other new building almost across the street near the Jack in the Box. I do wonder what with the two buildings, it's going to change greatly the way that area looks when these two buildings are there. But I think this is a nice building, but that's just something that I think is worth noting. I think the building looks good.
So I, yeah, I guess to Phoebe's point, there is no winning here. First, you know, it's too much wood. It's not enough wood. It's too much stucco. I actually, so I do, I actually like what you've, so first of all, congratulations. I think you guys have come back with something that's remarkably better than what we saw the last time. And I think, yet again, you know, demonstrating that this process works. I think the wood is, from my perspective, is fine. I like the way that it's differentiated on the top floor, so it doesn't look like it's going all the way up. And that breaks it up enough with the kind of metal overhead brow at that elevation as well. I really like everything that you've, that you've done. The only thing I would say, for me, the metal railing, it's really, it's, I like the railing. It's the attachment, which makes it feel, in my opinion, kind of cheap 1970s garden-style apartment. And if you look at that first floor, I think it's just much more elegant execution of that same railing. And so, and also, just from personal experience, I think the maintenance on that and how that metal interacts with paint and kind of dripping and rust tends to not look good over time. And I would strongly encourage you to, to change that and have it mirror the first floor, if you'd consider that. The, on that front elevation, A1E, you're showing kind of a tree to the right of the door, which I don't know is necessarily feasible because it looks like it's a elevated or raised planter. And I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to bring that tree or another tree into the landscape box that's in front to kind of further break up that elevation. Again, approval does not hinge on that, but I do think it is an opportunity to add some verticality, especially in front of that tower and break that up a little bit more. I really don't like those lights in the stair. I think it's going to be, not look good visually as you're going down El Camino. And I don't want to say runway look, but I think there's perhaps a, you know, whether it's downlighting from the, from the overhang or, you know, some other lighting. Again, maybe it's, maybe it can be executed well, but I'm concerned that it is going to be distracting and not look good for those going up and down El And again, those are all my comments. I think you guys really came in, listened to this commission, reacted very quickly and very well, and commend you guys on, on the work that you've done in a short period of time to accommodate all these requests. And I think the product is far superior to what we saw last time. So, great job.
So I move that we recommend to city council approval of design review, use permanent subdivision applications, D19002, CUP 19-0001, and TM 19-0024, at our recommendation, the 28-unit project, per the findings and conditions contained in the resolution, with a request that you look more carefully at the railing attachment and the railing safety relative to horizontal versus vertical members, and that you review the visible from El Camino lights in the stair for more elegant solution.
May I offer a friendly amendment?
I think you can't do it until I get a second.
I would second.
Okay, now I'll listen to it.
I would offer that we recommend either a 21 or 28.
I think I just did.
Oh, I thought you said 28.
I did say 28. Oh, you're saying I should recommend either?
Yes.
Oh. Tell me more.
Well, I think, I mean, we would want to see this project approved either way.
Okay.
And I wouldn't want it to
Die. Okay, so I will accept a friendly amendment that we recommend 28 units, but 21 units would be acceptable as well.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
All right.
Or sorry, anyone opposed? Great. Congratulations.
And thank you for really, I mean, you guys sounded excited, and I think we're excited too.
And talk about rising to the challenge.
Yeah.
Yes.
And thanks for staff for accommodating it in a short period of time and getting it all done in two weeks, so.
Yay.
All right. So we'll move on to commissioners' reports and comments.
Reports, so like, do we know who's covered the last council meetings?
Staff, could you remind us as to the general subject matter of the last city council meeting? And we'll try and figure out who was supposed to be there and perhaps was.
It was the
There it goes. The last council meeting was a special meeting. I think it was on August the 5th, and it had to deal with the small cell sites. The council did adopt emergency ordinance regulating the small cell sites. I don't think we had a commissioner in attendance at that meeting. And I think there was also some other discussions about some of the future legislation regarding housing at the state level that they discussed. And then your next council meeting is August the 27th, and it's Commissioner Bodnar that's scheduled to attend that meeting.
So the schedule that's in our packet is updated to reflect the newer council schedule?
It is.
It is, okay. Because there wasn't a meeting on the 13th, so.
That's correct. So that should have been scratched.
Okay, all right.
So you got a pass.
Okay, so Okay, so I wanted to talk about a potential future agenda item, which I was reminded of when reading the minutes, and the parking lift system of the project that we saw last time. They had made the comment in the minutes reflected that there's currently only one puzzle system that fits our nine-foot by 18-foot, which is a parking standard, which is really intended as a street parking standard or garage parking standard. You know, I don't know that it's really, it's not necessarily ideal for the puzzle lift system because you don't really need the same space. You're not all walking around in there. And so I wondered if it's a potential future agenda item, and we keep saying parking anyway because parking overall we want to see, but I wonder if we can look at, if there's potentially a different recommendation we'd make for the standards for puzzle lift systems, because we might be able to get more in those if we don't require this nine-by-18-foot dimension when we don't really need it.
So agenda is a discussion on the parking dimensions needed for various puzzle lift systems?
That would be my recommendation. Do I, yep.
Good point.
Because we could be shooting ourselves in the foot. We're trying to get as much parking as we can, so let's relax the standards that don't cost us anything. Okay? That was mine, yep.
Anything else?
John, do you have anything?
I've got your future agenda items, if you want to.
Great.
Go over those. So your next, next item or next meeting of interest to the Planning Commission is a City Council meeting of August the 27th. At that meeting, they, the council's considering amendments to the R3 4.5 Multiple Families Zone District, and then the downtown CRS uses that you made recommendations on. And Commissioner Bodnar is going to be in attendance at that meeting. Hopefully, he should be able to sit up at the staff table with us to do those presentations to the council. Your next meeting is September the 5th, and at that meeting, we have one item on the agenda for you that night. It's the proposed multifamily project at 5150 El Camino Real. That's 196-unit residential project, so that'll be a busy evening. That includes environmental review that was done on the project and just recently closed. September 10th council meeting, we have a story poll exception request. This is for a proposed project at 4350 El Camino Real. This is a project that you've had a workshop on. So once they get through that request, depending on what the council's direction to the applicant is, we will get that scheduled for a future Planning Commission meeting. That then takes us to your second meeting in September, which is on the 19th. And we have a couple projects. The first one is a project at, in Loyola Corners at 999 Fremont Avenue. Mr. Bunker's project is coming back, so you should be expecting to see story polls put up on that site by the end of this month. Then we have a project at 44, or 444, 450 First Street. That's another multifamily project that'll come, be coming before you. And then we have some amendments to the planning process that we had taken to the, or brought before the Planning Commission. A number of months ago, the planning, the City Council had some modification to those processes that they wanted to see incorporated. And the council's recently adopted a policy to change the public notification from 500 feet to 1,000 feet. So we'll be incorporating that into the ordinance that you'll be taking a look at and making a recommendation to the City Council on. Nothing right now for September 24th City Council related to the commission, but that then does take us to the City Council meeting of October the 1st of 2019, and that's where we'll have the 4898 El Camino Real project come before council for consideration. And then we expect that, we're kind of expecting that, that would take us to the City Council meeting on the 22nd of October, at which we're looking at those planning processes, amendments, and maybe the project at 5150 El Camino Real coming before council, depending on your direction in action on that project. So that's kind of the horizon for the commission.
At this point, I'd like to point out I'm not going to be at the September 5th meeting.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you for that.
John, can I also add that the story polls are up at 5150 El Camino, for those of you who might not live in that end of town? So it's also helpful, I think, to go back behind on Casita Way, and the neighbors, I think, would welcome your knocking on doors and seeing what they look like from their backyards as well.
I went by there, it looked like some of them may have fallen down.
Actually, I was going to say that the, the pinnants seem to be working very well, but the actual installation is not as long-lasting as we'd like to see it.
I would not want to park there.
Me neither.
All right. With that, we'll adjourn.